Good evening, everyone. Welcome to a regular city council meeting of November 28th, 2017. I'll call this meeting to order. First item on the agenda is the open forum. We have a couple of speakers that would like to make some comments to us. I would call Margaret Shearman to the dais, please. Good evening, Margaret. Could you please sign in and give us your address and speak into the mic for us, please? You have about three minutes. I'll try not to cut you short, but I just wanted to give you a heads up about the time limits, okay?
If you think I'm in danger of going more than three, you can...
Can you speak into the mic, please? Speak in. Can you hear me now?
Yes, great.
Okay. Give me a second to write.
Sure.
Okay. Thank you for your attention. I'm just here to ask some questions, and that may seem interesting because we've all been talking about the band shell for, what, six years now? Five or six years? But it seems to me that people still have trouble getting answers to basic questions. And so I just wanted to remind us first of some of the questions people have been asking about and gotten some answers to in partial, and then questions that we really need answers to right now. For several years, some have asked, the basic question is why this project is deemed necessary? That's too big to go into right now, I understand. Why opinions of experts like the Excelsior Study, the Audubon Society, and the Airport Commission have apparently been determined to be insignificant? Why the band shell is being built in a wetlands area on top of pipes that are part of a $3 million installation to clean the waters of Tafton region lakes? Some have asked where the public can see records of the alleged private donations that the city used as a reason to go forward with this project this fall? And to try to get answers to these and other questions, many of us have done things like come to city council meetings, come to planning meetings, communicating directly with elected and appointed officials, reading agendas and minutes, watching YouTube video recordings of meetings, reading city publications, reading Sun Current and Star Tribune. But here it is, November 28th, and we still have some fundamental questions such as why was excavation begun before the fundraising was verified? And why has excavation now been stopped? And the hole that was in the ground full of water has now been covered up? And what is the status of the funding sources? How can we know that they even exist or they've been deposited anywhere? And then furthermore, I was thinking if any of us wanted to build a house, would we choose a building spot that had, we were told by experts, had serious soil problems? Would we start the construction project on the basis of word-of-mouth promises of donated funds but without verified evidence? Would we pay for multiple architect designs, soil borings, and excavations despite all of the expert opinions about why that particular spot was not good? Would we refuse to tell vitally interested people such as our family about the status of the project? And if we're not willing to do those things with our own home, why are we doing it with our city parks? And so I'm putting in a plug for some reliable source of information, answers to questions. We shouldn't have to go hunting. We shouldn't have to keep knocking on doors and having them empty, you know? And, you know, I've looked at places like the city website. Somebody said we should look at a nonprofit website. Are they a spokesperson? Are they spokespeople for the city? Where can we find out the current status? Would it be good to have a city spokesperson or a page on the website saying, here's what's happening now and why that concerned citizens deserve answers for? Thank you.
Thank you. Steve, and I'm going to butcher your last name, LaVictor? You know the drill. Sign in, give us your address. Speak into the mic, please.
Mr. Mayor, if I could just interject. I don't think it happened with the previous person, but they should, for the record, for those watching on TV as well, state their name and their address, not just write it
My name is Steve LaVictor. I live at 4308 15th Avenue South, Minneapolis, Minnesota. Here's 10 things I wrote down about why the band shell should not be built. Number one, Best Buy said no to 75,000 in naming rights years ago. The Metropolitan Airports Commission staff members met with City of Richfield staff members and told them, and David Butler, they did not recommend building a veterans' park because of the airplane flight paths over the park. I have the documents from MAC. The band shell project was predicated on fundraiser David Butler raising an impossible $750,000 to $1 million, and the City of Richfield would provide seed money, as Pat Elliott told me, with 250 grand from annual Richfield liquor store profits that go to the park each year. The fundraising failed and the project was reduced to 400,000. The city stayed on the hook for 250 grand, and then 75,000 more was granted by the city through a transitory ordinance. That meant the script and burden was flipped, with the financial donation responsibility going down an astonishing 90 to 92 and 1/2 percent. Band Shell Task Force Chair Rick Jabs told me three years ago that it wouldn't cost task fairs anything. It's a free gift. It has become an expensive white elephant. Already a couple hundred thousand dollars have been spent or more, and just a hole in the ground to show for it. The local Musical Peterson family came and went. They were supposed to raise a lot of money, get personal naming rights, and get a contact of theirs who would help raise money and get reduced costs for the project. That all disappeared. The City of Richfield has refused to do an environmental impact statement or a noise study on the effect of noise on the wildlife in the park. There was no ballot referendum to see if residents wanted it. The community's support has never been there in voice or cash. The money to pay for it has been a mystery all along. Allegedly, 200 grand in cash and guaranteed commitments, whatever that means, have been made to the Friends of the Richfield Band Shell Inc. nonprofit group, according to Sue Sandall in a recent Richfield Sun Current article. It's all a big secret so the cash could be $1 and the commitments the rest. The article quotes Sue Sandall on when the money donations might come in, and she said they may be waiting until 2018. Really? Or maybe 2028, or the 12th of never. My guess is that they're waiting for it to be completed, and then their commitments will evaporate, as will David Butler's nonprofit group. Number nine, the first payment of the Friends of the Richfield Band Shell Group was missed on November 1st, 2017. I submitted a data request about the project, and the money came in, or I did that on November 13th, and miraculously, a check for $20,000 or so came in immediately after. I can't confirm yet if the checks funds actually cleared the bank yet. To number 10, ignoring the wetland, loss of open space and green space, common sense has been missing in action. Looking into modifying the band shell or pavilion or the shelter already in Veterans Park or stop the band shell and spend the money on something else.
Thank you. If anyone would stand and join me in the pledge of allegiance, please.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for
The next items on the agenda are a series of presentations. The first one, which I am always particularly interested in, is swearing in of new Richfield City police officers. Chief of Police Jay Henthorne and Public Safety Director Jay Henthorne is going to take the dice and introduce our new officers to us.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, council members, family, friends, community members, city officials, and our police staff in attendance tonight. It is my honor and pleasure to formally swear in two of our newer police officers this evening. Officers Luke Itrum, with his family here, wife Erica, Mom Becky, Dad Dan, Brother Jake, and last but not least, Grandma Sue. Officer Mike Anderson, his mom Liz, Dad Mike, and Sister Jessie. These officers have completed their field training process. They've gone through a month-long academy, how we teach our officers, the police, what we call the Richfield Way. They've also gone through a strenuous 14-week training program, along with completing their probationary status. These officers exemplify our mission statement, which is to safeguard the lives and property of the people that we serve, to reduce the incidence and fear of crime, and to enhance the public safety while working with the community to improve their quality of life. So if I could have Officers Anderson and Itrum stand up, please, and I'll minister the oath. Please raise your right hand. I, state your name, do solemnly swear to support the Constitution and the laws of the United States, the state of Minnesota, and the Charter and ordinances of the City of Richfield, and to discharge faithfully the duties devolving upon me as a police officer for the City of Richfield, to the best of my judgment and ability. Congratulations.
I had opportunity to have coffee with the chief this morning, and we were talking about the swearing in of the new officers. And I'd suggested to the chief, in this day and age, seeing the, and I can say this, the young people that are desired to be public safety officers and serve in that capacity have taken on multiple roles in terms of their services to the community that I stand in awe of. I mean, you've got to be a counselor, you've got to be a pastor, you've got to be a marriage counselor. You need all sorts of specific social behaviors and everything. And it's incredible, the opportunities you have, but also the responsibilities that go with it. And to see people that have a goal in mind and strive and move forward and stand up here and get sworn in so that they can actually serve the community. It's like I said, I stand in awe of you because the multiple responsibilities you're undertaking are great, but it's something that you want to do, something that you're going to do, and something that I'm really proud to be up here and able to shake your hand when you get sworn in. So thank you very much. I look forward to seeing you many times in the community. Anybody else?
No, I think you said it. Good job.
Okay, thank you.
Very good.
I think next item is council member Reagan Gonzalez is going to introduce the Chair of the Annual Health Commission that works for the services and provide advice and counsel to the community.
So the next item is the 2016 Annual Health Report to the Community, and I believe Bonnie Paulson, Public Health Administrator, will be up presenting.
Good evening, Mayor Elliott, and members of the council. I'm Bonnie Paulson. I'm the Public Health Administrator for the City of Bloomington.
Could you speak a little louder, please?
I'm Bonnie Paulson. I'm the Public Health Administrator for the City of Bloomington, and I work closely with Richfield and Edina, and we are the Public Health Alliance of Bloomington, Edina, and Richfield. And I just wanted to talk tonight a little bit about our annual report, and I think you've already received a copy of it, but just kind of wanted to bring up a couple of highlights. I always like to start with just a reminder that you guys are the Board of Health for the City of Richfield, and as such, you have responsibilities that are in state statute, State Statute 145A. You have six areas of public health responsibility. So as a public, as a Board of Health, you need to respond to these things to keep your population healthy, and you do that through some of the work that Jennifer does, but you also do that by contracting with Bloomington Public Health. And so we provide a lot of those services for you and your residents. And in our annual report, oh, now it popped forward, basically, our annual report for 2016 really focused on accreditation because we became accredited, a public health department in 2016. And we did that as a public health alliance, meaning all three cities were allowed to accredit together. So it wasn't just Bloomington becoming accredited, but Richfield became an accredited public health department as well as Edina, along with Bloomington. So it was really a partnership as we did that. So basically, by becoming accredited, we had to respond to 32 public health standards, and we had to look at 114 measures. So really, we had to do a lot of work of saying, here's all of the good work that we did. These were just a lot of the commitments to making sure that we were a quality public health department. Some of the things I'm going to just highlight in the annual report, we, one of the things for accreditation was really working with community partners, and we worked really closely with Richfield High School students last year through a SNAP-Ed grant. We were able to redesign the cafeteria to try to make it more, to focus more on healthy eating for them. And so they, that was a really, and we were asking the students what they wanted, and so we really worked closely with them. We provide technical assistance for all three cities that are comp planning, and I know every city's in the middle of their comp planning process. And then one of the projects that we've been working on for a few years is the Latino Childcare Providers Network. And we had 104 Latino childcare providers that met monthly, and that group has been meeting for a few years. And look at my numbers here real quickly. So over 200 childcare providers have participated in the network, and it really is a success because it's built a trusting relationship with them. And really, it has become them to lead it, and we are just participating with them. Kind of that's a picture of some of them and what they do, and we really look at, how can we help them include nutrition, physical activity, and school readiness for the kids that they provide services to? Another thing that we continue to focus on is tobacco. We've been really working hard on looking at smoke-free policies for multi-unit housing, trying to make sure that everyone there has the ability to be healthy without secondhand smoke exposure. We continue to work on that. We've been doing some more surveys, and we've had a few really large housing places really choose to go smoke-free in Bloomington, and we're hoping to expand that more into Bloomington or Edina and Richfield. Another big area that we work on for Richfield is working with families, moms and babies. We have over 1,000 WIC clients that we served in Richfield last year. We had two types of home visiting that we do with moms and babies. One is just a regular mom-baby visit. We had 144 clients with 351 visits. We do intensive home visiting with those high-risk moms, and we had 595 visits with 43 clients. And we have a community health specialist who goes out and works with families, too, and she saw 125 residents for 629 visits. So a lot of work that we do with your moms and babies in Richfield. Those are specific numbers for Richfield. So I just wanted to just highlight a couple of things. There is more things in the annual report. So if you have questions, you can let Jennifer know or let me know, and I'll ask, thank you for your support for public health, and answer any questions if you have any.
I just want to make some comments. I looked at your report, and it was very impressive. It was very well done, very sharp, and I appreciate it that you highlighted, you know, Richfield so well. And I think that, you know, the partnership we have with you is just very practical, very useful, very beneficial, and, you know, it's really something that we, you know, I think we take you for granted oftentimes, but I do appreciate the hard work that you put in and, you know, and the benefit that Richfield reaps from our partnership.
Thank you, and I'll let the staff know because I really think it's the hard work of the staff, and they really do enjoy working with all three cities, but I know they do enjoy working with Richfield.
Good.
I would like to just share my gratitude with you, Bonnie, and the rest of the Health Department for all the great work you do. I used to work at the Bloomington Public Health Department, and we are very fortunate to be, I think, one of two city-based health departments. Is it just Minneapolis and Bloomington?
Right.
Okay. So most public health departments in the state, and actually all of them except for two, including Bloomington Public Health, are county-wide. So we benefit as Richfield residents, being a part of Bloomington Public Health, because the public health services that we receive are specifically tailored to Richfield as our community, which is really great. Most communities don't get that, and we do have excellent services that are recognized regionally, statewide, and even nationally through the work of Bloomington Public Health. So we are beneficiaries of an outstanding public health department. So thank you so much for that work, Bonnie.
Thank you. All right. Any other questions?
Thank you very much for the presentation.
Thank you for letting me come.
The next item is the annual meeting with the Transportation Commission, and I see that the chair is here. Would you like to? Oh, I'm sorry, Transportation Commission is going to be moved back. It's the annual meeting with the Arts Commission. I apologize. I should, while you come up, let you know that we just came out of a work session regarding public art and works in Richfield, and I have a feeling that there's going to be much more coordination between your commission and the city council and public works in putting many more public work, public art projects to play in the city, and a lot of new ideas and a lot of energy moving forward in that direction. And I know for a fact that you and the commission are up to it, so I just wanted to give you a heads up that you're under the gun.
Yes, no pressure.
I'm excited. That's wonderful.
We are, too.
You didn't make it on my PowerPoint, though, Pat. I'm sorry.
Having been to some of those meetings, I know that everybody on the commission, because they're very interested and passionate about art, so that we couldn't ask for any more or any better patrons of the arts in the community. So with that...
Thank you very much.
It's your table.
Okay. Well, I'm happy to present an overview on the Arts Commission this year to the council and the community. I do have a PowerPoint here. Jared was nice enough to get that rolling. I tried to make it artful. Okay, so I wanted to start with the purpose of the Richfield Arts Commission, which is to raise awareness of, promote the value of, advocate for, and support the arts in Richfield. And I have a list of our current members. There are nine total spots on the roster, and we currently have six active members. So our chair is Heather Gibbs. She was unable to attend today, which is why I'm speaking in her place. Secretary Larry Nelson, myself, Alex Dahl, Karen Wolverton, and Derek Sandbeck are four current members. We also have a community service liaison, Lisa Rudolph, and our staff liaison, Mary Kay. So we have three vacancies currently on the Arts Commission, and with terms ending in 2018, we're expecting to have a total of six vacancies. So we are asking for applicants to the commission and your help in filling those spots, looking for people with a passion for the purpose that I mentioned. And I'll take you through a little more of our initiatives this year to see if it resonates with potential applicants. So our activities included a social hour at Houlihan's on Wednesday, the third Wednesday of the month, from 5:00 to 7:00 p.m. The goal of that was to really build an artist culture in the community. So whether you're a poet or a painter or a musician, this was the opportunity for the commission to connect with the arts community. We also did a couple of events, one at the Augsburg Public Library. We did judging for the teen art fair, and the photo that I have on there is actually some of the entries in that arts fair that we put in the display case outside. We manage the display case out there, trying to get local artists to display their art. We also do art displays with local artists at the community center. We participated in the Wellness Expo, and so put together a large white piece of paper where students and young children and adults could write what they loved about Richfield and create art in that spirit. We also judged the Sun Current Photo Contest. I think there were five different categories, and those photo winners were published in the Sun Current. We support the Little Library, and we have a Little Library at the Richfield Art Center, which is at the Adventure Gardens Mini Golf Course. Though I have further information on that. We also do various activities as part of the farmer's market. Most recently, we did an interactive edible art experience. You can see the cupcakes there, Halloween spirit. And then finally, we just support ongoing arts activities. So whether it be entertainment at the park, Shakespeare at the park, et cetera, we take part in anything we can. We did some cross-commission collaboration this year. So we were part of Fourth of July Parade of, you know, what do they call those? We were one of the entries. So we held a commission banner and walked with other members of the commission to just promote our presence and let residents know what we're, that we exist. We also provided, you know, some activities as part of Pen Fest. So we collaborated with the Health Advisory Board and some other commissions on a trivia experience that basically provided information about demographics. I remember sending you guys a questionnaire related to some fun facts about yourself. We wanted to use it as an opportunity to really educate residents in Richfield. So that was a great experience. There were some changes with the Richfield Art Center. So the Richfield Art Center is located at Veterans Park, next to the Adventure Gardens Mini Golf Course. It's part of that building. We were approached by the City of Richfield about potentially not being, not having the art center there anymore. The vendor there wanted to expand into that space, and we voted in May to, you know, bless that move. So we are still in negotiations on further use of the space, but we will be moving out all of our supplies and equipment in there before any remodeling begins. The Little Library will move to the band shell space, but the art center bike sculpture will remain at the current location. And I hope Mary Kay got all of that right. That's pretty close. Okay, so our vision for 2018. So obviously, our mayor brought up something very exciting that we'll be very eager to explore. We had a presentation from Paige Dancinger in June to potentially do some interactive informative art in the city. She does kind of huge displays through an iPad application. That sounds pretty special. So I think we'll be exploring more of that with her, as well as potentially other opportunities. We want to support band shell entertainment. We'll see how that looks, but looking to, you know, discuss how we might participate in that. The commission collaboration was, I think, a really positive experience. I should also mention that, you know, we took part in the Friendship Commission's effort to put the sculpture outside at the park. And so I think that's an opportunity for us to really kind of learn from each other and connect as residents. There's been discussion about some youth programming, so potentially hosting a poetry slam or something of that sort, local arts events. You know, we've discussed maybe doing paint nights at local breweries or other locations, and then maintaining our efforts and our existing initiatives. And that does it.
Thank you. I would venture a guess that we will definitely find a place for you to continue your collaborative art efforts and bring in the kids and get them introduced to various artistic-type endeavors and everything. So do not worry, we will find you space.
We won't. Okay, thank you.
It's like I said, I think that sometime in the near future, as we move forward, I'll meet with Kristin Asher, who presented the work session, and try to collaborate because I know that you have some innovative ideas and some ways... because I know that you have some innovative ideas and some way of spreading the word. And also, you have some people with a lot of artistic talent on the commission that can probably work with Kristin in putting together ideas for art, art on the streets, art in the neighborhood, art in the public places. So I think that there, you know, we got to get you filled up, because there's going to be a lot of activities and a lot of things going on, so...
Okay, yeah.
Thank you for coming in and giving us an update.
Great, yeah. I think there's a lot of potential, and I'm glad the city supports it. That means a lot.
Absolutely.
So thank you very much.
Thank you. Somewhere in here is our agenda, but it's running away from me right now. Ah, so the next item on the agenda is hats off to hometown hits. And as is usual, I will defer to Councilmember Garcia to lead us off.
Thank you, Mayor. I only have one item, and this is a tribute to Floyd Roman, who passed away on November the 4th. Floyd Roman was a Richfield police officer for over 21 years. And when he retired, he retired as captain. But Floyd was in World War II. He's a Navy, he was a Navy veteran. He served capably and distinguishedly with the Richfield Police Department, like I said, for 21 years. After that, he went on to spend 20 years at the Bureau of Criminal Apprehension, and he served there as Assistant Superintendent. But one of the things that sets him apart, I think, is he's a very, very unique individual. He was, he believed in being involved in the life of his community. He believed in being a volunteer, in giving back, in supporting, in nurturing the activities and the happenings that were going on in Richfield. And he did this through a lot of military, through military organizations and the two service clubs. He also, he also went to a lot of community events, and he made, you know, I mean, everyone knew him. I mean, he was just a fun guy to just sit and visit with. He had a lot of history about Richfield. He knew a lot of people, and he was always kind of up on what was going on. He was also really into church activities. You'd see him, you know, at all these community, what do you call the fun fests that the churches have. Just a heck of a good guy. We need, we need people like him. And it was, he was proud of this community, and we really, those of us that knew him, appreciated him. He was really one classy guy, and so he deserves to be recognized and to be appreciated.
Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Troutman.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I just wanted to take a moment to talk about Small Business Saturday. People have heard of Black Friday and Cyber Monday, and Saturday is, has become a day where we can get out there and support our small business owners. And so I had a chance to do that specifically in our Penn Central corridor and check in and meet with a lot of friends who choose to invest in Richfield, but also make a lot of, a lot of new friends. So there's, it's, when you, when you choose where you're going to do your Christmas shopping, it's a great opportunity to choose to invest in the city where you live. We are a better community when we invest in ourselves, and we recycle those dollars. A couple of folks that were new to the area, there's a Greener Gardens next to Hub Hobby on Penn Avenue. It's a brand-new gardening business. It's only been there several months, promoting a lot of new hydroponics and occuponics and gardening stuff, so that's a great opportunity. If you have small children, Hub Hobby, of course, is a must-stop. And there's a new tenant on 66th and Penn, Carcujian Rugs, an 80-year-old family business that chose to recently move to Richfield and Penn Central. So we say welcome to them, and as you're doing your Christmas shopping, think about shopping in Richfield.
Thank you. Just a couple items of public interest that I'd like to offer is, we swore in some new officers today, and Councilmember Garcia gave a great eulogy for Chief Roman, or I'm sorry, Chief, yeah, Roman. Another thing of interest is that on November 10th, the Richfield Police Department conducted its annual alcohol compliance check on 34 businesses that hold licenses to sell alcohol in the city. And of the 34 businesses, none sold alcohol to underage persons. So that is a testament to the community itself and to the diligence the Police Department has in checking and educating the purveyors of alcoholic beverages to what our expectations are, and they exceeded wonderfully this time. And as Ms. Simpson had indicated, there's some vacancies on the Arts Commission, and there's vacancies, not a lot, on all of our commissions. And there'll be a press release put out by the Richfield City Council as of December 20, or December 1st. The council is seeking commission applicants. We will be interviewing in January. Our last cycle of applications and interviews, I think, met or exceeded everybody's expectations in terms of the applicants, their interest in the city, their flexibility, if we couldn't place them in their number-one choice, being willing to accept their second or third choice. And the interesting thing about it is, is if you get on a commission, there's ability to change, there's ability to further grow your interest in the city and your ability to work with the city. And just in terms of what a commission member would volunteer for, is it... The involvement in a commission improves equality and responsiveness of public decision-making and makes you a part of it, not just an observer of it. Commission members are excellent ambassadors and advocates for the city, and that is something that everybody in the city benefits from. And it creates community ownership by sharing talents and perspectives of all the diverse people that live in our community. So I would ask everybody to go to the city webpage, take a look at the various commissions, sign up, sign up for one, sign up for six. We'll guarantee an interview, and we will place you, maybe not in your first choice, but we're going to get you in something you're going to enjoy, and that's going to be of a benefit to the city. So... Councilmember Howard.
A couple items. Want to invite folks to attend a open house tomorrow about Lyndale Avenue. You know, we've seen a lot of major infrastructure investments in Richfield in the past several years, on Portland Avenue and 66th, which is, of course, ongoing. But Lyndale Avenue is an area that is up next, so to speak, and we're beginning that process. And so it's very critical to get as much public input as we can. So would encourage folks to stop by Wood Lake Nature Center from 4:00 to 7:00 to provide some input as we begin that process on Lyndale Avenue. I mentioned 66th Street. I just wanted to call out that work that I believe now has completed for the years. Is that pretty much for the year? I just want to thank the city for all its work over this year of major construction and coordinating so much with, and I want to thank the county as well. I think in a lot of ways, it went smoother than I think some folks had expected. I've heard a lot of positive comments from folks throughout the year. And most of all, I want to thank the residents and businesses who are putting up with a challenging time. But I think we're already starting to see what that corridor is going to look like when it's a finished product. And so we can all take a breath for the year with the construction on 66th and see what is shaping up to be an excellent corridor, and then brace, I guess, for one more year of heavy construction on 66th as well. But I thought this year was, it just went very smoothly, and hopefully is a sign of things to come for next year as well.
Mr. Mayor, I wanted to add on to Councilmember Howard. I'd like to also thank the residents of Richfield, who have really had a lot of patience and have navigated, you know, the chaos sometimes of our busy streets that are under reconstruction. But I also think the city has done the best that they can through their city website to kind of guide all these residents through the, you know, through the challenges that we've had. So I agree, and I appreciate you bringing that up.
I would like to add that I was not happy about losing 18 houses on the west side. But when you drive from Xerxes to 35W and you see, you see the way the street lays out now, and the landscape and the streetscapes aren't even complete yet, and it's still, you can visualize what a wonderful east-west route through Richfield it's going to be. It's going to, it's really going to, it's going to be a signature street for Richfield. And the county and the city really did, really did a good job. And I still wish we had the houses, but I certainly don't feel bad about what the road turned out looking like. Councilmember Reagan Gonzalez.
So for tonight, I also want to talk about a few small businesses. I've been talking to several businesses along 66th on the east side and just checking in with them to see how things have been going since the road reconstruction and how businesses. And it's just so exciting to me to really get to develop stronger relationships with our local business owners, and there's a couple that I wanted to highlight. So just kind of echoing a little bit of what Simon said, Councilmember Troutman said, you know, think about all the different things that you can purchase as a gift, and it doesn't have to be a physical item. It can be an oil change. It can be a massage. It can be all these different services that we have in Richfield. So keep that in mind when you're doing your holiday shopping. But I talked to some folks, the owners of the Local Roots Cafe, and they were hoping to be open this fall, and it looks like they are shooting to open their doors in January. I know a lot of residents are excited about Local Roots opening up their doors on 66th. I also was able to visit the folks over at Therapy of Champions on E66 as well, and that is just an amazing facility, a destination site for folks. If you have any ailment, almost of any type, inflammation, and any type of pain, anything, you can go there and get all types of services. And the business owners have great dreams and aspirations, and people come from all over to visit their facility. So definitely go in there and check it out. And then lastly, don't forget that we have, you know, businesses that were greatly impacted and will continue to be impacted with the reconstruction on 66th. But one that I think about in particular is the Cinco de Mayo, a Mexican grocery store. So they have Miama, which is a restaurant on the side of the grocery store, and then the grocery store itself. Speaking to the owner there, I know the reconstruction was very difficult, even though there was a lot of signage and communication, and, you know, we all did as much as possible. A lot of residents just avoided that area altogether, and it really impacted their business. So please don't forget about our local businesses, and there's a bunch of different ways that we can really support our community here. So that's it.
Thank you. Next item is the approval of the agenda.
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
The agenda is approved. At this time, City Manager will read the consent calendar for us. Did I forget the...
Well, Mr. Mayor, I would ask you to take a look again at the idea of talking about a motion to cancel the second council meeting in December, if the council chooses to do that. That's something that we have done historically here for, oh, gosh, 15, 20 years. The council meeting, as you'll see when I start reading off some of the stuff on consent, there's a lot of stuff on the 12th, and you could always have another special meeting if you needed it. But this would be the opportunity to cancel the one for the 26th, if you wish to do so.
Comments?
That works. That would be great.
I guess I should ask for any objections?
No.
No.
As I recall, it means we have a lengthy meeting, our next meeting, in December.
Oh, yes.
But as long as we gird for that.
Well, at this time then, I will move to cancel the second City Council meeting on December 26, 2017.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
You're up, City Manager.
Thank you, Mayor. Mayor, members of the City Council, and those in the audience, the consent calendar up next contains several separate items, which are acted upon by the City Council in one motion. And once the consent calendar has been approved by the City Council, the individual items and the recommended actions will also have been approved, and no further council action on these items is necessary. We start with Item A, which is consideration of the approval of an amendment to the Hennepin County Cost Participation Agreement for the acquisition of right-of-way for the 77th Street underpass of Trunk Highway 77 project. I just want to say that's the million and a half dollars that Commissioner Gotel has got extended for us another in 2018, which is wonderful. Item B, consideration of the approval of resolution to accept a grant of $4,027.92 from the Office of Justice Programs for Bulletproof vests. Item C is consideration of the approval of a first reading of a transitory ordinance vacating a portion of 67th Street East right-of-way and a storm sewer easement within the Chamberlain Development Area, and schedule a public hearing and second reading for December 12, 2017. Item D, consideration of the approval of a first reading of an ordinance authorizing the conveyance of vacated right-of-way owned by the city of Richfield to the Richfield Housing and Redevelopment Authority. Item E is consideration of the approval of a first reading of an ordinance amending the city's zoning ordinance related to construction standards to mitigate the impact of airport noise, and schedule a public hearing and second reading for December 12, 2017. And finally, we have Item F, consideration of the approval of setting a public hearing to be held on January 9, 2018, for the consideration of the issuance of a new on-sale wine and 3.2 malt liquor licenses with outside service for LRFC LLC, doing business as Local Roots Food and Coffee, located at 1817 66th Street East. And that concludes tonight's consent calendar.
Thank you. Any comments on the consent calendar? I would move approval of the consent calendar.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Next item is Item Nine, Councilmember Howard.
I have consideration of the approval of a resolution amending a planned unit development, conditional use permit, and final development plan to allow a daycare facility, primrose schools at Cedar Point Commons. Final development plans for Cedar Point Commons were approved by the City Council in 2006. The nearly 30-acre development included Target, Home Depot, several restaurants, and inline retail shops, and space for additional development on the vacant lots west of Richfield Parkway. For many years, market conditions were not strong enough to develop these additional sites. But in August 2016, the City Council approved an amendment to the planned unit development to allow additional retail buildings and preliminary approval of a daycare serving 180 children at this location. At this time of that approval, it was anticipated that final approval of the daycare could be granted administratively, as long as all code requirements were met. The applicant is now requesting to reduce a required buffer yard adjacent to residential property at 6501 16th Avenue, which is the Mount Calvary Church Parsonage Residence. The requested buffer yard reduction necessitates that the amendment be brought back before the council for our approval tonight. Mount Calvary Church has provided a letter of support attached to this report, and finding that all requirements are met, staff recommends approval of this amendment. I will make the motion to approve a resolution amending the planned unit development, conditional use permit, and final development plans to allow a daycare facility at Cedar Point Commons.
Second.
Any comments before I call the vote?
Any additional comments from staff? Do we know, I guess, one question would be timing for folks that might be wondering when they might start to see this come to fruition. For example, a parent that has a child that wouldn't mind to stick a little closer to home.
Yep. Thank you, Mr. Mayor and councilmembers. I believe they're going to start construction as soon as the ground is sufficiently thawed to allow them to put in footings and foundations, so next spring. You know, the use itself, and then the adjacent use at Mount Calvary Church, are both, have a lot of child-related activities, and are very, they reflect each other very well, and I think that's part of why Mount Calvary was amenable to this change. And I, I think that's part of why Mount Calvary was amenable to this change.
I would just suggest that Primrose is pretty well-known, is meeting the gold standard in regards to childcare. And I guess I didn't realize that it was for up to a hundred and eighty children. That's, that's a lot of parents and people coming to, to the neighborhood that are gonna be. Are they indicative of the continued growth and development along the sixty-sixth Street quarter on the east side? And I think it's gonna benefit the stores, the shops, the, the restaurants and everything else because there'll be a lot of people in and out. So I, I think it's, once again, it's just indicative of, of the growth that, that has taken place on the east side and that we can expect to continue to grow. So I, I welcome them to the neighborhood.
Absolutely.
With that being said, there's been a motion and seconded, I'd call the vote, all in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Resolution is passed. Next item is councilmember Reagan Gonzalez.
The next item for council consideration is a public hearing and consideration of the approval of resolutions related to the establishment of a new tax increment financing district for the Chamberlain Development. On September twenty-sixth, two thousand seventeen, the council approved plans for the Chamberlain, a multifamily housing development on the city's east side that also includes two-block extension of Richfield Parkway. A revised contract for private development with Chamberlain Apartments LLC was approved by the HRA on October sixteenth, two thousand seventeen. This contract calls for the HRA to establish a tax increment financing district, two thousand seventeen-one, in order to facilitate, a, a housing district, in order to facilitate redevelopment of the property and promote the development of affordable housing. The development area currently sits within the existing redevelopment tax increment financing district, the Cedar Avenue TIF District that was established in two thousand and five. City staff, HRA, TIF analyst from Ellers and Company and the HRA attorney and the developer have concluded that a new TIF, a new housing TIF district would be better suited for this development. In order to establish a new housing TIF district for the project, the thirty-one parcels within the project area must be removed from the existing Cedar Avenue TIF district. The TIF plan estimates the generation of up to twenty-five million five hundred eighty-six thousand five hundred twenty-seven dollars of tax increment, tax increment. This money will be available to reimburse the developer for the TIF qualified expenses over the life of the TIF district. The HRA adopted substantial similar resolutions in November, on November twentieth, two thousand seventeen. And the Planning Commission adopted a resolution finding the modifications and TIF plan consistent with the comprehensive plan on November twenty-seven, two thousand seventeen. So now to staff.
Yeah, thank you. James Lenhoff from Ellers and Associates, the city's TIF financial analyst, is here. He's gonna provide you with a brief presentation. It's both a very good primer on TIF in general and some information about this specific TIF district. So with that, I would hand it over to James.
Thank you, John. Again, my name is James Lenhoff with Ellers and Associates, the city's financial advisor and was deeply involved in the financial analysis and TIF preparation for this project. As was noted, there are two actions before you tonight. We'll cover those, but I also just wanted to, again, cover just a little bit of information, a few of the key components related to TIF, a few of the important numbers related to this project, and then ultimately a couple items related to the TIF plans that are before you tonight. Since not everyone has the exciting opportunity to look at tax increment financing at every single meeting like I often get to in many different communities, I do think it's helpful to actually start with just a, kind of a still-down definition of TIF. And up on the screen here, it is the ability to capture and use most, no, not all, most of the increased local property tax revenues from new development within a defined geographic area. Before we pull those apart, it's always important to recognize that when a city starts down a path of considering any type of public assistance, TIF in this case, the first and most important question is looking at developers' pro forma and their request to go, is there a need for any assistance at all? And if there is a need for assistance, what is the level of assistance that is warranted to make it financially feasible? What's that minimum amount needed to actually get a project over the finish line? And that's something that we do with every single project that gets looked at for financial assistance. And over the last several months, and, and really even longer than that, we worked with city staff and the developer to pull apart their pro forma in every which way possible. I'm sure Steve here with the development side can attest to that part of it, put it back together to see what is ultimately needed. And that is what culminated in the HRA's work in approving the development agreement for just under eight-point-five million. And I think I saw a look-up at the dais when there was a reference to a twenty-five million dollar number, and I'll talk about that here in a moment. So that was previously approved by the HRA tonight, and tonight is really the last step in the TIF process. When we look at TIF, there are many different nuances and a lot of fun language and state statutes, but it really comes down to a few key components related to that definition. Now, any property that's out there has a value assigned to it and property taxes are calculated off of that base value. That is the case with this project, of course, as well, and that's that original tax capacity. And that value, even once you add on a new project and add more value to the project, to the property, that base value, those taxes still get paid to the city, the county, the school district and so on. That is not captured as part of the TIF. It's a common belief that when there's TIF on a property, everything goes back to a project. That's not the case. There's still some that is withheld in that. And it's only that new or captured portion of that new value where some of that becomes available for the potential TIF assistance. And just as importantly, it's only available for a certain period of time. Statutes limit us, specifically in a housing TIF district that we're discussing tonight, to no more than twenty-six years. Some districts are shorter because not every project actually needs twenty-six years of assistance. But in this very simple graph up here, it's showing over time that there's a captured portion that can help in TIF. There's a base portion that is still paid to all the local jurisdictions, and at some point that all ends. The TIF does not go on forever, the TIF assistance does not. And when that TIF district ends, what is paid in property taxes goes to all the local taxing jurisdictions, now on hopefully still much higher value because it's a much bigger project. Now, as I alluded to, there are some portions of that that are not captured in the TIF. There's those base value taxes that I just talked about. When it's a commercial property, or if you happen to have a cabin, it is subject to state property taxes. Those are always taken out when it's a commercial property. And then there's market value taxes, which is how we describe essentially voter-approved school referendums. So that part is also excluded from the TIF calculations. And in fact, it is calculated on the higher value. So those voter-approved school referendums benefit from the higher property value when calculating those taxes. As I mentioned, we are looking at a housing TIF district tonight where the maximum possible term is twenty-six years. And one of the key parts of a housing TIF district is it does have an affordability requirement associated with that, which the developer has agreed to in the pro forma and must maintain throughout the life of the TIF district in order to continually to get that assistance in the future. There's two options that a development can choose within a housing TIF district. And one of those is that twenty percent of the apartments can be affordable at fifty percent of area median income or forty percent of the apartments can be affordable at sixty percent of area median income. What that means in real-life numbers, also up on the screen there, is that if you're a household of one, they must reserve twenty percent of the apartments for households earning about thirty-one thousand, almost thirty-two thousand a year, all the way up to households of four to forty-five thousand. And that's adjusted based on household size. I just showed household sizes of one through four on the screen here. There's also limitations and statutes on how assistance can be spent. We don't get to do just anything with it. In this case, it can be used on items related for construction, the affordable housing, land acquisition, no demolition associated with this project anymore, site improvements and so on. Ineligible uses don't really apply in this, but it's good to always note that with TIF, you can never pay for recreation-related items like city parks or other city buildings. TIF is only for other, to assist private redevelopment. For the project specifically for you tonight, related to this TIF proposal, it is the three hundred and sixteen mixed-income apartments proposed by the developer, most of which is new construction, a part of that is rehab. We talked about the affordability component and the previously approved development agreement that has already gone through the HRA process. One thing that I think is always important to talk about, since again, not everybody's familiar with the all aspects of TIF, what Richfield does and what most communities do, it is pay-as-you-go TIF. And the key part of that is that none of that assistance is provided upfront to the developer. Only once the project is done and only once they start paying the new higher property taxes does then, over a period of time, assistance become available. There is no upfront assistance associated with a project like this. It is pay-as-you-go. So they have to show higher value before they can benefit from any potential assistance. Now, I've committed a cardinal rule against PowerPoints by showing very tiny numbers up in the PowerPoint, but there's just a couple things that I want to draw your attention to that I think are important for this project. I'm happy to go back and answer any questions, though of course, about this and any other items. Now, as I mentioned, those base value taxes, those still get paid to the local taxing jurisdiction or not captured in TIF. But what's a little bit unique here is that most of the property has actually been owned by the city for a number of years. And when it's owned by the city, it doesn't pay any local property taxes. And, and this, actually pulling numbers from this project right now, those existing properties and the Richfield-owned properties, the value is just under, or would produce a, a value of just under two-point-six million dollars. Now, reality is, is that although that property is owned by the city and doesn't actually pay taxes today, it does certainly have value. And in fact, when we look at it for TIF purposes, we work with the county assessor and they assign a value to that property as though it had been paying property taxes. And what that means here is that two-point-six million dollar value increases to about five-point-one million. And it's off of that number, and if we would look at this year's numbers, it would calculate those local property taxes. So actually, starting from the beginning, the amount of taxes that are potentially generated by the base value of the property go up immediately as soon as it is sold to the developer. That does not get included in that TIF. And I think that's an important part of this project. These numbers up on the screen, if you really dive into it, are based on pay twenty-seventeen tax rates. Of course, we know over time that will continue to get adjusted. What gets really exciting with TIF and where we had that potential for assistance is that we looked at, when it's all said and done, a value of almost forty-four million dollars on the property. And it's off that increased, that incremental higher value. We find the opportunity for TIF assistance. And if I can draw your attention into that lower right-hand corner where one of the arrows is at, that based off that value and the pay twenty-seventeen property tax rates, it would generate a tax bill of about eight-hundred-and-twenty-six thousand dollars. And when we distill that down to what is actually available for TIF, we take out those base value taxes, we take out the state auditor's fees because they take a little bit, and the city's administrative fee. Again, based on the rates this year, that would produce an annual potential TIF of six-hundred-and-ten thousand dollars or about seventy-four cents on each property tax dollar paid. I just covered a lot of numbers really quick there, and I'm happy to go back to look at any of those. Now, the actions before you tonight, there are two components to that. The first one, it was noted in the introduction, is modifying that existing Cedar Avenue TIF district to remove the thirty-one parcels. There's also another component that extends the duration of that district by ten years, which is the result of some recent special legislation the city received, so it's more of a technical item. That does require a public hearing before taking, taking action. And then the second item is creating the housing TIF district for the Chamberlain Project. Earlier, I mentioned that I would come back to that twenty-five million dollar number, but we're talking about about eight-point-five million of assistance. That twenty-five million dollar number includes a couple different components, specifically inflation over time. It's meant to provide maximum possible budgetary flexibility to the city. That twenty-five million dollar does not in any form represent assistance to the developer. It's a TIF calculation for the city's use related to the TIF district. This action also requires a public hearing, as we noted, the development agreement was previously approved. We would ask that you take these actions separately tonight. We have put the resolution language up on the screen for your use. And again, it does require a public hearing before taking any act. So with that, covering a lot of small details and some of the big ones, I'm happy to stand for any questions.
I just want to make some comments. You know, a lot of the, the information you gave us is information that, that we know, but it was very good for you to review. I was also impressed the fact that it was very understandable. And I know that TIF is, has often been one that a lot of folks don't really understand. And, but your presentation was one that, that I would kind of take out and, and put it on our website because it was just so clear and, you know, and the way you explained it, that I think it would serve a good purpose for the citizenry to hear it. I, I just was very impressed when you said it was fun. You know, after, after, after getting plugged into it and listening to it, it really was very, very, you know, salient issue. And, and I appreciate that you did such a good job in, in bringing out, in all, bringing it all together.
I'm gonna second councilmember Garcia's suggestion. As you recall, when you made the presentation to the HRA, the newest member of the HRA congratulated you on not only the cogent, but the simple, simplified way that it was explained, is as simple as she'd ever heard. And I would suggest with, with suitable attributions to Ellers and Mr. Lenhoff that, that we do post it because it, it is, if somebody needs just a, a basic explanation, that's as good as I've seen also. So we will, we'll put a little C in a circle if you like, or we'll just give you the attributions, whatever you require in terms of authorship and everything on it. But, but I think it would be benefit to the, to the city, be able to point somebody in that direction where they can take a look at that. They're gonna have questions, but really it is a cogent, plain English explanation of TIF. And I think it's, I think it's very well-presented, so I congratulate you on that a second time.
Well, thank you for the very kind comments. I'm glad it comes across as clear. TIF is not always one of the clearest of things when people first sort of delve into it. And as always, if there are questions after this, we're happy to step in and address those as well.
Right, and we appreciate that.
So this is a public hearing. Is anybody here for the public hearing on this item? Is anybody here for this public hearing on this item? Nobody's here, so now we would take two sep- oh.
I just wanted to add one little tiny piece. As Mr. Lenhoff said, in determining the twenty-five million dollars of TIF that could be generated in this area, we use very liberal criteria to figure that out because that number is to the city's best benefit for that to be a high number. When determining the amount of increment that goes to the developer, the eight million four-hundred-and-ninety-two thousand, we use very conservative figures for that twenty-six-year period. What that means is, in many TIF districts, most really, we're able to achieve that number sooner than twenty-six years because the very, very conservative criteria we used to analyze it was underrepresented. And so I just wanted to make sure you know that, that many times, if not most times, the obligations that we have in TIF districts, we pay off well before the expiration of those districts.
I'll move to close the public hearing.
Second, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Public meeting is closed.
Now, two separate motions, correct? So I would like to make the motion to approve the resolution to modify the tax increment financing plan for the Cedar Avenue Tax Increment Financing District.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
And the second motion, is there a motion to modify the redevelopment plan for Richfield redevelopment project area, establish tax increment financing district, two thousand seventeen dash one, the Chamberlain, within the Richfield Development Project area and adopt a tax increment financing plan?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Both items pass. Just for the, for the public, item eleven on the council agenda called for the consideration of, you were finished, right? Okay. Called for the consideration of a variety of land use approvals related to a proposal for construction of a new auto dealership by Maury's Automotive Group. There was a meeting this morning and parties agreed, the staff and Maury's group had some additional matters that they wished to discuss. So this matter has been continued to the January ninth, two thousand eighteen city council meeting. So with that being said, it brings us to the city manager's report.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of the council. Just a couple of quick things. One, you've all received an email that came from the school district. They would like to have a, a quick study session on December eighteenth in advance of our HRA-EDA meeting that night. And I believe most council members are available that night. I, I recognize not all, but I think we should go ahead with that meeting and kind of talk about, you know, the aftermath of, you know, getting the referenda approved and that going forward and, and talk about what they're looking for and what we might be looking for in the next legislative session, that kind of thing.
You know, you know, Mr. Devich, I, I appreciate that the school board reached out to us because when, last time we met with them, we really, you know, we really made a pledge that we wanted to continue to, to work a closer relationship. And I think it's happening.
Yeah, for sure. And, you know, and we'll do the same thing and in, in the spring, we'll host the next one here, so. host the next one here, so. Okay, that's one thing. I just wanted to mention that I just saw a recent article in the paper. It talked about, and it's a very salient article, it talked about cities in Minnesota, and what the struggles, the financial struggles they're all having with dealing with infrastructure, water, sewer especially, and roads, that are all basically coming up for repair all at the same time, and, you know, the amount of money across the state that it requires to make those kinds of improvements to your basic infrastructure in a community. And thinking about what we have done, and we've embarked on already here with Sweet Streets, we're over three years into that project, getting all of our streets with Portland Avenue, with Sixty-Sixth Street, you know, the big chunk of the cost of that goes with replacing our water and sewer infrastructure underneath those streets, which is expensive, so, you know, we're ahead of the game in that regard. And I think we found a couple of areas off of Portland, as I recall, where we also had to do some work. So cities across Minnesota are going to be faced with the same thing that we've taken on, but I will say that I believe that here, we've taken it on a little bit ahead of the game, of where a lot of cities are at. And, you know, that's part of why we see the debt service, and for people at home, that's why we see the debt service and the tax levy increase locally here. It's not because we're spending more money on the budget for delivering some of the basic services, but rather, we're having to pay the debt for all of the infrastructure that we now have to replace. You know, a lot of that stuff was put in the ground forty, fifty, sixty years ago, or more. And, you know, roads, they're generally, in Minnesota, good for about thirty years, and we've gotten a lot more out of our city streets than that, and we're going to get a lot more as well. But just want people to, just to be aware of that. If somebody wants to pull that article, it was in the scrib, probably the past four days or so, because my memory probably can't capture more than about four days back. But if somebody thinks about it, they should pull the article up and read it. It's very informative.
I did see it, and the first thing I thought of was a speech like this about why we're ahead of the curve, so.
Great minds, think alike.
Hear, hear.
That's all I have. Thank you.
You know, the first thing I think about is living on Sixty-Eighth and Oliver when they put the water pipes down the middle of that street, and God, does that tell you how old I am? Yeah, I.
Well, that was like sixty-seven years ago, wasn't it?
It was, now, it would have been nineteen fifty-five, fifty-five, fifty-six.
Oh, well, guess I'm not far off.
Be careful. Claims and payroll.
Mr. Mayor, I will move claims and payroll.
I will second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
There being no further matters on the agenda, I adjourn.